The fire exits are marked, and hopefully if you have a cellphone with you that you have it on, turned off, or on, or whatever, before you don't get interrupted. And can we have a roll call?
Henry Hill.
Yes.
Russell LaFors.
Here.
Roger Black.
Here.
Marian Alexander.
Yeah.
Patrick Duhien.
Here.
Steven Einhaus.
Here.
Alan Reese.
Here.
Brett Baker.
And can we have someone make a motion to prove that the meeting was advertised as required?
I'll make a motion, second.
Second. Roll call vote on that?
Henry Hill.
Yes.
Russell LaFors.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Marian Alexander.
Yes.
Patrick Duhien.
Yes.
We need a motion to prove last month's minutes and raise the reading of those minutes.
Can I make a motion?
Second.
Second.
And roll call vote on that?
Henry Hill.
Yes.
Russell LaFors.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Marian Alexander.
Yes.
Patrick Duhien.
Yes.
All right, and we have old business?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we got, uh, shoot, hold on. Sorry. Uh, we got three old businesses to go over first. This is one that didn't show up.
No.
We got rehearings first. Rehearing first. Uh, Greg.
No, no, this is asking for rehearing for next week.
Just a minute. So Greg, as a 152 El Donquin Road request to allow to enclose his deck on previous conditions approval, it does not allow the enclosure. Typically, we do a request for rehearing and we allow it.
And rehearing on that one?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second. Roll call vote on that?
Henry Hill.
Yes.
Russell LaFors.
Yes.
Marian Alexander.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Patrick Duhien.
Yes.
And then you want to do the codes department?
Yes, this is from us. Uh, we're asked to review a request for rehearing to open up a field number 2051 dated March, uh, 2016. Uh, Matt Murphy, owner of Forty South Junction Road, requesting from our office to, for his EBA review and possible, uh, revocation of the variance. Uh, they're in direct violation of zoning board conditions that you guys put on there with storage. There was no outside storage. As you've seen, uh, what we saw today, what's reported to us, uh, by him, that he's put a trailer there. It's not allowed. It was direct violation and outside storage of equipment, as witnessed on here, which is a direct violation.
So motion on that one?
Make a motion?
And second?
Second.
And roll call vote on that?
Henry Hill.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Russell LaFors.
Yes.
Patrick Duhien.
Yes.
Marian Alexander.
Uh, the other old business is hiding Nissan at 822 Route 3, request from the town to open up this variance to see if the requirements, uh, were met or possible revocation of the variance that was granted to their, uh, sign attached to the building.
So I just want to point out here, so this is what it looks like today. You gotta look at it. If you remember correctly, you know, we had a discussion about that red Nissan sign in the center. Would the, uh, red outline actually be considered part of the sign or not? You know, in the minutes, it said that they, you know, that was gonna be part of the siding of the building. As you can see here, how far out it protrudes, you know? So, we actually want some clarification from you guys, since you guys are wanting to approve the variance. Now, what would you consider a sign? Just the Nissan and the two loops around it? Or would you actually consider that red background part of that sign? And then also, depending on how you answer that question, is, you know, did they mislead us on their presentation? And that's why you granted a variance for that sign? So, that's what we're looking for for next month.
Yeah, one more.
Somebody make a motion for Nissan on that?
Here.
We're rehearing, we're rehearing.
Make the motion for rehearing.
Roll call vote.
Henry Hill.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Russell LaFors.
Yes.
Marian Alexander.
Yes.
Patrick Duhien.
Yes.
So we're gonna actually switch, we're gonna go to the, yeah.
We're gonna go to the, yeah. This is just in case there's somebody here that wants to speak to the warehouse.
UMS slash Schluter, uh, depending on what you wanna, uh, call it, but it's actually UMS application, withdrew their application to be here tonight. Uh, so it will not be heard. So if you guys are here for that, they withdrew it. There's, uh, that, we will not be the lead agency of it, the planning department, when you're running a seeker. Uh, we can't make a determination until it gets through DEC for lead agency and determination because of the size of the building and where it's going, and it has a countywide impact. Uh, so it'll go through two other agencies before it can even come to the zoning board appeals. So we don't want to waste a lot of your time if you're here for RMS slash Schluter property on 26 Iris-Sedmer Road slash Pleasant Ridge Road, but it's on that parcel, so they will not be heard tonight. We don't want to take up any of your time.
But, the public hearing was, you know, advertised, so you will have a time to speak if you'd like to speak.
Yes, definitely.
Okay, so I'll go through real quick, and then the chairman can open up the public hearing. You have a chance to speak, in case you're not gonna be here later.
Excuse me, is there a blueprint available, so I can see? Is there actual layout of a blueprint? Have they established a blueprint?
I'll, I'll show you what we have.
Thank you.
Remember, th- this thing goes to the planning board first, so when you look at, you know, the layout, that's them, not us.
Okay.
Okay? So, this, this was a request for a height variance, okay?
Right.
So, yes, it's 450,000 square foot building. The height out there is only 36 feet. They're gonna actually be 76 feet, so they need a 20, uh, 40-foot variance. Which is why they would be, they would've been here tonight.
Right.
So, just to show you, everybody doesn't know where, uh, Schluter is. These are rail tracks here. This is Pleasant Ridge Road. Schluter is all up here on the north half of this. This is the vacant field where they kinda cut all the trees down. Okay, so they actually, this is the Iris-Sedmer Road down here. The gravel drive road that comes in. This is where they're looking at putting their building.
Yeah, and it abuts my property.
Let me go through it, and you can talk afterwards, all right? So, right now, it's all, uh, zoned industrial, all this right here. A little closer view. So there, so there's the, the layout plan. So this is the site plan, not a layout, you know, blueprint floor plan of the building. This is only a site plan.
Could I get up a little closer, please, just to see the footage? You object to that?
I get, let me, let me go back to it, when you're ready to talk, and I'll put it back up for you, okay? So, here's kinda their rendering. So this is just their proposal, doesn't mean it's gonna look exactly like this, but this is probably the first go-around. This is just showing different sides of it, but you can see how that, that this end of the building is higher. You know, it's a good, you know, well over three stories, and it's probably 11 feet instead of, uh, eight foot. So you can see where that 76-foot height's gonna be, is that, that back corner over there. I think that's the last one, okay? So, I'll go back to this one here, sir, you can go and take a look at that.
Thank you.
I'll turn it back over to the, uh, chairman.
No, there was also a parking area for 54 tractor trailers. Is that going in that same area?
Remember, they're here, they were gonna be here tonight for their height, that's all anyone discusses right now.
Okay.
Anything else, could be the other board, we may get to that board.
Public hearing portion of the meeting is open, and anybody here, you can talk to us, but we won't be able to answer any of your questions.
Okay.
We can, we can pass your concerns on to them.
My main concern is, is there any?
Can you, sir, can you stand up, come to the mic?
Yes. My name is Carson Arnold Senior. I live in 14 Whispering Pines. I'm here because of great concern. Um, I've been here before, Schuettler's a good company, what they do, they produce a good, good product, whatever. But as far as allowing them to build something 35 feet higher than what is the norm, that's unheard of. Um, I don't believe there's another warehouse or factory in Plattsburgh that has, that exceeds, and was ever granted that appeal to, to, for that zoning, which is wrong. To go 35 feet higher, which is seven and a half stories high, if you look at it as storage, that's high. And, it is wrong.
I can say that there are other structures in the town that are pretty close to that height.
Okay, and there's an issue about water safety. There was one, I was, when that one warehouse was built, the last one was, well, I worked for Medley and Chase, I built that warehouse. It was a warehouse, they turned it into a factory. Now, in the process, are they thinking the long-term? Because I talked to Mr. Madonna. He was telling me that eventually that factory was gonna turn into a working, working factory. If they could produce, in Germany, this, the EPA permits from the Smog that's coming out of that one building now, that was actually just a warehouse, they turned it into a working factory. It would cost 4.6 million dollars to put scrubbers on that. What he told me was, they're trying to evaluate that in Germany. Perfect the science, and if they perfect the science, then they're gonna turn that factory, the warehouse, into a working factory. Okay, I do have it recorded on my phone, 32 minutes and 8 seconds. But as far as allowing this to draw, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else here like to speak to that matter?
Yeah, I'm against it. I'm, my property abuts it, I'm Glendesso.
Give us your name, please.
Glendesso, 24 Whispering Pines. And that, that abuts my property line.
Okay.
So, I'm totally against it, the 36 feet higher than, so you can let Schluters know that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Can I, just what, what's gonna ensure us, if it's all granted, that this is gonna be a, 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 a warehouse, that in the long-term, down the line, they're gonna turn it into a working factory?
We don't have that.
You can't, Kevin.
Can't answer your questions.
Thank you.
So, that is our concern.
Anybody else? Uh, we'll close the public hearing portion of the meeting, and go on to the new business.
Okay, ready.
The next business.
Now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Ann. Who recues herself?
Yes.
We gotta make it, sort of, 14 other ones.
I gotta get back up there again. There is like 80 slides.
Okay, so duly noted, uh, Mary Ann is also on the board, uh, she's gonna recuse herself now, and then remove herself from the board, so we'll be down to a four-member board, please let her reply. Dave, come up front and center, please?
Yeah.
Uh, what we have is appeal number two, you can sit right down.
You get, you get, sit right there.
You get to sit down.
You've noticed that's Mary Ann, you are not Mary Ann. This is Dave, uh, Alexander, for 1235 Route 3. They're asking for an air variance, request to be allowed to construct a 30-by-30 detached garage in this yard, which does not meet the 10-foot side yard setback for accessory structures in R2 district, encroaching 5 feet into the side yard, 10 feet leaving a 5-foot property line. They were in front of you, uh, a while ago, a couple times ago, uh, for a variance, the variance was approved. Uh, since then, uh, we, we do not have the ability, we as the code officer, to change anything from the zoning board appeals. The garage, uh, was then increased by size. They had ADA, uh, draw up the plans to, uh, extend the garage, but it'd still be an expansion of a non-conforming use, which then has to come back in front of you guys. Hence why we're here, uh, even though they have the side yard, it was only for 25 feet, I believe. And now it's only 30, have you said that correct?
That's 24, 24.
Oh, 24, so. So then Alan can go over the details of, uh, to bring you back up to speed to where they were, what they asked for, and what they're asking for now.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is Route 3, and this is just, that was to be down the road here. Okay, so, everybody probably knows where, uh, Ronnie's and Harrigan's is. Their house sits right here, and they're looking at, they're putting their garage over in the side yard. So this is all zoned R2. So a little closer, this was the attached garage, which was gonna be removed, and they're gonna put a new garage, 'cause even this corner, this corner over the side, maybe the temporary one was over here, but this one over here.
Right, yeah.
So, here's kinda what it looks like today. It was raining out this morning, so that's why it tells today. So here, what they're doing, so now, I believe this is going to stay, correct?
It's gonna be torn down.
And then rebuilt as part of the house?
And then, a whole new addition is going, a little L-shaped.
So here, here we have the, uh, the garage on this side yard over here.
If you'd like, I'll point something out on the screen.
So basically, it's, this is gonna be over just a little bit here. So, I mean, it's just gonna still be 30 by 30, but the diagram is off a little bit, it should be right here.
Or smaller, depending on where, we have to figure out where that cable is.
It'll be a maximum of 30 feet.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, no more than that.
Open up the public hearing portion of the meeting, anybody here like to speak to this matter? And not seeing anybody raise a hand, we'll close the public hearing portion of the meeting. And as I recall, uh, it's like, has been stated that it was just gonna be a change because of the physical size of the structure.
I don't remember the original variance, but...
It was the same thing, 5 feet.
Was it?
Yes, I, yes, I think so.
So the 24-foot was in that?
Right.
It's going lengthways, not width.
That's right. So basically, square it off, that's right. So any board, board members have any comments or questions for?
No. I mean, it's, we're, we're basically saying the same thing.
We're just adding six more feet to the variance.
Just in case they need to have that, because of whatever line it runs.
That's right. Yeah.
We need to approve the variance.
Make the motion to accept the variance, or approve the variance.
I'll say it. Show hands on that, and roll call vote.
Henry Hill.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Russell LaFors.
Yes.
Patrick Duhien.
Yes.
Thank you.
Did you, Steve, I didn't get you to read the, went to the county, right?
I did.
Yes, everything, I'm sorry, everything was a local issue, but yes, it did go to the county for a, uh, 239 M referral, and it was a local issue. Thank you. Uh, next one, Nicholas Wells.
I'm here, Warren.
Come on up front, front and center. So, sorry, nameless.
Warren Wells.
So, uh, this is appeal number 2278, Nicholas and Warren Wells on 5 Brookview Drive. They're asking for an air variance. The lot is a pre-existing non-conforming, they're requesting to be allowed to remove an existing stoop and patio and replace it with a newly constructed, uh, enlarged 6 by 32 front porch, which doesn't meet the 30-foot front yard setback in an R1 district. It encroaches 15-foot in the front yard setback, only leaving 15 to the property line. Alan's got the details that were provided to us, and kind of the layout, and where the home is.
Here, Mr. Chairman, this is part of the, uh, Cliff Haven subdivision, so this is the main part over here, and then they have these side streets right over here on the opposite side of Route 9. They're actually about the third, fourth house down on this drive right here. So you see right here, so it's all R1 in that area. So this is their house right here, and they're doing the front porch up here. So here's kinda what it looks like today, so you can see they have the little stoop and the stairs that goes up here. They do have a, a ground-level patio, right now, they're looking to put the front porch here and over to the garage. So this is their, sorry, map, which shows the existing conditions, which is how we found out that it's pre-existing non-conforming. Okay? That's it. So, on this map, you can see right here is the, uh, the front porch. Hey ma'am, anything you wanna add to?
Nothing to add to it, pretty straightforward.
Do you know what the width of the, uh, step is now, or the platform? Coming from the house?
Your steps from the house, 4 feet.
It's, yeah, standard step, I don't know.
It's actually, it's actually a little bigger, it's, it's about 5, the, the concrete pad on top?
Yeah.
It's about 5 feet out, and then the stairs come out another, at least 2 feet, 3 feet.
So we're actually losing a foot. No, they're going to 6 feet.
No, it's probably, it's, their porch is probably...
2 foot worth of steps. Oh, yeah, they're...
Right. So their, their porch and steps is a, out where that, the width of what that porch is gonna come out to, because they're now going to exit the porch off over by the garage on the side, instead of further out.
All right, uh, public hearing portion of the meeting, anybody here like to speak to this matter?
And we'll bring up, remember, last month, uh, we had one gentleman here, but then after hearing discussion, he had no comment.
We'll close the public hearing portion of the meeting. And, it did go down to the county for a 239 M referral, and it was local.
What's the side yard on this one, again?
15, 10 and 15. 10 and 15, yeah, so there, there was a 19, 6, 1958 or 62 subdivision. Like Alan said, this was Cliff Haven case housing.
But I'm just looking, looks like there'd be a second variance request, that this steps are coming out 6 feet from the, this description. The 15 feet is only to the house, they're coming in, so we got two variance.
Well, the steps are...
No, the 15, so, the 15 feet is going to...
The house, or the garage.
To where the garage is.
Okay.
The porch is actually stopping at the garage door, it's not crossing in front of the garage door.
That's showing 6 feet.
So, that's showing that, that's showing...
Yeah, it's showing this beyond the building.
Right. And ma'am, you can correct that, right? It is stopping at the beginning of that garage door, right?
So we were actually going to be taking out the garage, we were thinking, and making that into living space, and we wanted to go to the end of the garage.
Okay, so then where are your steps coming from? Are the steps gonna come out towards the road, or they gonna go to the right?
Still to the front, still to the front, the front door still.
Yeah, this, this picture here, showing these steps on the side of your B garage, is that where they're coming out? Where you're stepping down off the deck?
Oh, so I was under the assumption that it would've been to the front still, like with the front door, and then we were gonna put it out to, um, like, all the way to the edge of the house. I didn't know if there was...
But it's not, the steps are not going past the end of the house.
No, but she's saying, she's thinking the steps are coming in front of the house. So it's gonna be another 3 feet.
Or is that just showing 6 foot wide for the porch then? It's not actually an addition on there?
Yeah, they're not showing steps on here.
Yeah, they're not showing steps.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, good, good call.
Okay, so then the, and I can recall, uh, around the corner from you, last year, we had almost the same thing with the new porch going on the front of the house.
They can only go in this one way.
Yeah, it's, yeah, actually, across, across the road, around the corner, yes.
And it was already built.
The minister.
It was already built, right?
Yes, they already built it, had to come in and get a variance because they built it in the setback.
So the variance would be for the, allowing the 15-foot in the front. Anybody?
I don't know what a variance is right now, be honest with you.
The 6-foot on the end is just showing the width of the deck, so there's...
Right, but then the steps go down.
They're going off the front.
But you have, you are allowed steps.
Okay.
Yeah. All right.
It's only projection into a side yard, I think it's 4 foot into a side yard, right? Projections, right? Not only the side, it's, it's, you have your, or for projection into a yard, in the face, just the side. Cause most of them are in the front. So we do allow steps into the side yard, if it's even, if it's into the variance, then that's, uh, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, if you wanna grant the variance of, uh, 6-foot wide, no, the, the width of the porch no wider than 6-foot, to include steps going down, then you could, you could do that, but...
Let's find out what the rule says right now.
Yeah. Yeah, projections into a side yard. Hazardous. It's 4 foot. Is there any?
No.
Got a second? But fight first. At first, we've done the job.
For the question of the 6-foot, yeah. You're projecting beyond the side of the house.
Well, we have to find out what the intersection of...
Yeah, what I'm saying, they're talking about, Ron, this is protruding beyond the edge of the house.
Or is that just showing the dimension?
That's just showing the dimension, that's just on the 6-foot wide.
Yeah, I'm, I'm confused too, but there's no...
It's not part of the structure.
Not part of the structure.
Okay.
Projections into 32, 32?
To the end of the garage.
Page 30, 10, sorry. Very full setup. Uh, says that, uh, ornament features no such as projection may extend more than 3 feet into any required side yards. Uh, open, enclosed, quarters, uh, floors, fire, exits, stairways, walkways, balconies, projections into a yard not more than 4 and 1/2 feet may be printed by the zoning officer, where such projections are so placed not to obstruct light or ventilation.
A yard, so they can go off the top. Is it how I'm hearing you?
Yeah, any yard, outside yard, any yard.
4 feet.
4 and 1/2, or something like that.
Yeah.
It's just 4 and 1/2.
That's pretty exact.
Half of anything. But then there was, you know, we are saying, she can, she could go 4 and 1/2 feet into that required side yard, with no variance. The front, the, she's gonna go to the front yard.
She can go in the front, now, and, he said a yard, 4 and 1/2 feet.
Enclosed, uh, required yard. Yeah, 3 feet, any required yard, or... It doesn't, so that's more of a fireproof outside stairways, walkways, yeah, so 3 feet into any required, any required yard. That's the great...
Steps down to the...
So would be the, the 15-foot variance.
Yes.
Do you know how high this deck is gonna be?
No, it's gonna be like the same height.
There's 3 stairs there right now.
3 steps.
Same, those steps are a little bit wider, so it'd be shorter than those steps, but it's gonna be the same height as the patio that's there right now.
So it's, so there are a lot of treads, a lot of these tre, uh, treads that we're gonna, I think. Let me just make a stipulation, it has to be 3 foot.
Okay.
Well, just that, the steps have to be only, can't be any more than 3 feet from the deck.
Yeah.
So the deck has to be pushed back.
Need it more, then you make an 8-foot line for step. 8-inch. Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Right.
It should have to be.
Especially if it's a public license or something.
Okay, people, right. Who wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that, uh, we accept the variance.
Okay, and a second?
I'll send it.
And show of hands, and roll call vote.
Henry Hill.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Russell LaFors.
Yes.
Marian Alexander.
Yes.
Patrick Duhien.
Yes.
Thank you. You have a few days, come in next week, you'll get your permit, and then you guys can start work.
Thank you.
1304 Military Turnpike, uh, Jordan Samantha Hicks. Front and center. They're asking to request to remove an existing sync, uh, single-wide manufactured home and replace it with a new double, or a double, minimum...
Modular.
Modular, no, manufactured home.
Yes.
It does not meet 15-foot setbacks in an R5 that's now longer MH, it's considered an R5 manufacturing district, encroaching into the 3-foot side yard, leaving 12-foot on the property line. Alan can go over the details, and Military Turnpike, where this property is located.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, this is Military Turnpike, coming south out of town.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, this is Military Turnpike coming south out of town. This is crossroad, this is, I think, Otter Creek Drive or something like that, I hope it's called here. They have this first parcel right here. So you can see it's all zoned MH, or sorry, R five. So this is their parcel here, so this is that road that comes into Otter Creek. You'll see there's a little sliver here that actually still belongs to Otter Creek and then their parcel starts here. Here's what it looks like this morning, I took the picture. They wanna put it in here, I believe it's this side over here that they're gonna be deficient by three feet.
Yes.
Yes.
So here's your layout, so this being the front part looking down, they'll only have twelve feet here and they'll still maintain a ten feet here. Anything you'd like to add to the, to the board, you may speak.
No, it's.
We found this game.
Let me think about, say, a couple items, is there the possibility of getting twenty four foot homes still from that?
Um, I don't know, the ones that we were looking at were twenty six.
Yeah, they were twenty six.
It's twenty six.
Or twenty, twenty eight, twenty eight, twenty six, twenty eight.
And the other item I will say too is that your answer to number three is, it is an substantial variance because it is three, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. So I'm taking that one off.
Okay.
Open up public hearing portion of the meeting, anybody here like to speak to this matter? Not seeing any hands, I think it went down, Steve?
It did go down to, to County for two eighty, or I'm sorry, to, uh, two thirty nine, and we threw no comments. I'm gonna make one comment to here that we made a very vital mistake with, uh, Otter Creek. It's been the same thing that we just did with this, wherever the entrances are or exits to the home, they encroach in more than three feet in any required side yard. So then if you're already ten feet, now you're eight feet with the required, the same, the same thing we did with three feet for the, uh, the Goddard Creek, we sure don't come down to like eight. Then if you have a four foot deck and a four foot deck, your stairs end up right on the property line. So it's just something.
So where, where are your door, your front and back door, beyond the sides of the house?
Uh, front door is on the twelve foot side.
So here, right?
Yes.
Yes.
And then the back door, if I back here?
Yep.
Okay, so what, what he's asking is right now, you're only ten feet, but you're still gonna have a landing, the stairs will come out. Same with up here, right? You have to have a landing and stairs that come down to the ground.
Yeah, I believe they're a standard four by four and then they would come right off towards the turnpike.
So, so right now, the ordinance allows for four and a half, for egress of stairs. Okay, but, so the problem is that when you put it on here, and this will be part of their condition, if they grant it, it comes out, but it doesn't come straight down, it comes out and you turn and go left or right for your stairs to go down.
Right.
So the stairs will be on the side, going down the side of the house.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
But. There's gotta be a landing, that doesn't, that's not the description of the stairs. So the stairs are allowed to come out three feet projected from any yard. There's no way, they, they have to come back for another variance, they're gonna get a landing to come out from the house and then into the stairs.
So there's, there's certain things that are allowed at three feet, there's certain things allowed at four and a half feet.
Okay.
Okay.
That's the difference.
So the stairs, stairs for egress are four and a half feet. Chimneys, cornices, you know, decorative things like that are the three foot thing. So on the last one we were talking about, it wasn't three feet, it was still four and a half feet. Because hers were stairs coming out, off her porch.
Yeah, four and a half, I figured that goes to the code of having a four, four, or four and a half, if you have your spindles with the six inches on both sides, that's four and a half. That's why it was in, we did, took it from New York State Code. And the other ones for, uh, chimney, say if your chimney comes out too far or cornices, so you go to the edge of the building, if your cornice comes out, that's where the three and a half, sometimes if you do, you two and a half and three with the, like, if it had fancy molding, that would, it just, it took me a second to figure out what's the difference between the four and a half and the three and as soon as.
So the four and a half is from the platform?
That's what the platform, yeah, because it's, it's probably called, yes, coming out the door to a platform before you hit stairs.
Okay, so then they have the stairs.
Cause we wouldn't wanna make some.
They just, they just can't walk out onto that platform and then go that way, but stairs, you have to walk out, you have to turn and go down the side of the house.
So it's the least.
Because then you, you exceed that four and a half feet.
Cause if you have a four, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Four foot platform, yeah. We can't make a variance that doesn't meet New York State Code.
Right.
I have been bad in not doing the balancing test on everything, but keep things moving.
Shirt would be grabbed.
I'll get my book down.
But yeah, you're supposed to keep track of it, you know that. All right, uh, anybody else have any questions or?
Oh, I, I have one, you mentioned, uh, it was, it was not something you definitely were going to do, the possibility of putting a garage in there. Where would you put the garage?
Not a garage, just like probably, you know, a shed for the lawn mower, weed whacker, stuff like that. It's, there's already a small eight by eight shed in the backyard now.
Yeah, room for that, for sure.
Okay, yeah, all right.
Now you're gonna tear that, get it down, get it out of there completely, right?
Yes.
Anybody?
We open and close it to the public?
Yeah.
Yeah, you got it right.
Yeah. We do the balancing tests, whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant. Do you mean, like, they don't make twenty four foot?
Oh, we don't have that.
Manufactured homes anymore, it seems like.
I don't know.
So they probably already have these four or two.
Uh, undesirable change in neighborhood character or nearby properties will be an improvement, uh, whether you request a substantial, don't see it as being substantial, nor, nor whether the request will have adverse physical or environmental effects, I don't see any of those happening in this either, so.
So what's a variance?
They have a B for three feet, right?
Correct, yeah.
Three feet.
With a motion, that way you approve the three foot variance.
Well, second?
And show hands and roll the vote.
Henry Hale.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Russell LaCorte.
Yes.
Mary Ann Alzine.
Yes.
Patrick DuHue.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's it?
Yeah, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Uh, Jane and Craig Waldron, two ninety five Cumberland Head Road. Craig and Jane, or I'm sorry, Jane and Craig, or, ah, yeah. Jane and Craig.
She's the leader of this, she's, um, so we'll give her the credit.
They're asking for an area variance at two ninety five Cumberland Head Road to request to allow to construct a twelve by twenty five attached garage uh, unto the side of the residence, it doesn't meet the required thirty foot side yard setback in an R four residential district. Encroaching twenty three feet into the setback, leaving seven foot to the property line. Alan has the details of what was provided to us.
Here's the chairman, you come down Cumberland Head Road, so the fire department's right up this way, come down this, this side of Cumberland Head Road, which is kind of the south side of, uh, Cumberland Head. These real houses here, they are right in here. You can see this is all zoned R four, the champagne party is starting to take it over here. So this is the house here. They're looking to put their garage on this side over here. Here's what it looks like this morning, I'm gonna try it again, so the garage is going basically right here where the note is right now. And this is their plan right here.
It's forty five, yeah, twenty five.
Yeah, you notice the side and the.
Oh, it's forty five long. It's that, okay, yeah, the link, the link's not an issue, it's just the width.
Yeah, that's correct.
So we're doing a twelve by forty five?
Correct.
Yeah.
You guys can take over from there?
What?
I think, you know, from the documentation we presented, there's not any significant changes. I will say that we have hired a surveyor to definitize for us and for the board as to where our boundary line is and what the setback variance would be. So you'll see that the seven foot, uh, marker there actually becomes eight foot when that's worth.
So the survey has said you got eight feet instead of seven feet?
Seven feet is what we estimated at the time we submitted documentation, Dan Elder was out, it was past Friday and, uh, the survey reports.
And the other side that says twenty to the south, that's actually twenty two feet.
Or it says one twenty to the south?
No.
It's on the right hand side, this, yeah, side yard.
Yeah, that's twenty two.
That's, that's the only change that, that we have or are aware of right now.
What's the total side there supposed to be?
Fifty. Minimum twenty, total's fifty.
Uh, public hearing portion of the meeting, anybody here like to speak to this matter? And not seeing anybody, we'll close the public hearing portion of the meeting and let's go down or not?
We did not.
Did not, okay.
I will say we have personally talked to the neighbors, both across the street and to the left side in particular. It's, uh, Ed Castine's property on the left hand side of the house. Eber lies to me, he has no objection to the direction of that garage and the space that we've, we've talked about. You know, as you take a look at the, the neighborhood, if you will, and the houses to the right side of us, you'll notice that they're all quite close together and quite honestly, none of them meet the existing setback requirements. As an example, you know, on the, our right hand side of the property where our property line goes over twenty two feet from the side of our house, there's actually only five and a half feet between that property line and the start of Rick and Mary Teff's house. So that's, the series of houses random rowed there are spaced unusual for today's, uh, requirements.
Yeah, the non-conformant.
Really?
Does that, yes.
That wouldn't be the basis for continuing to make them non-conforming?
Not necessarily, no.
No.
I'm just stating it for a fact, that it's not one of the, we wanna make sure that we're just not adding more non-conformity.
We simply not change the environment or character of the area.
Right.
Yeah, uh, if you look at it saying, uh, whether or not it's substantial, could, cause you're, actually you're not even in conformance to start with. Yeah, you're shy ten feet to start with.
You're twenty eight to be totally conforming, right?
Twenty eight, fifty, right?
Yeah, the summation of all.
And twelve and eight is twenty, the eight feet.
I'm assuming that room there was originally a garage or not?
True.
Uh, I assume.
It wasn't when we bought it.
It wasn't a garage when you bought it?
No, it was already living space.
And so is there a room behind there now or is that being an addition to this garage?
That would be an addition.
So you're looking at the garage and the twenty foot room by twenty.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right.
Could you put the garage in the back?
Only if you wanna come into a bedroom or a bathroom.
Yeah, and, uh, the attached garage was important to us from safety and health. All right. Because of some previous and existing conditions, we felt that the attached garage was the only viable garage that we would pursue.
And what would happen if you put it in the front, towards the front?
It's on top of our subject.
No, right on the driveway.
Oh, right on the driveway.
Yeah.
In front of that addition that was a garage or whatever it was.
Well, we could, it's a possibility, it would look the side view from, from Ed Castine's property.
Right, so there's lake view.
To the lake, yeah.
Right, there's lake view, and that was one of the things I talked to Ed about was to make sure that the garage did not extend out any further than where you see the, uh, old garage used to be.
Right.
Because then in his backyard, looking at an angle, that would completely cut off his view from taking a look at the lake.
Okay.
And that's something that we thought about and shows not in that direction because of the.
He is to the left of your.
Yes.
Property?
He is.
And.
What's in front of him?
Uh, roads and houses in front of him, so his only view of the lake is looking at that angle cutting across our driveway to see it from his backyard.
Dr. Curry's house is across the road at those really high, high hedges.
I guess I don't see a deck on the back of his house from this picture, but I don't know if that was from a time ago or not, but.
No, he has a pool back there, he's gonna put a deck around it, I think.
All right, was that? Yeah. So he, I'm just thinking about his view. He would have to. Going too far.
Yeah, I guess it's going back to look.
I don't see.
I mean, what they're talking about is, you know, this property here sits in front of that one, so that's why he's got, he's got to look down this one.
Yeah.
Got the head roll, the high head roll.
Yes. Right, so his only view from that picture you were just at, from his backyard slices right across where my car is, if you will, where the car on the driveway.
But that picture is actually from years ago because you have a porch in the front, right?
That is correct.
That's a twenty one picture.
Yeah.
But where the location of the porch is, doesn't interfere with that view, but extending where the garage used, where the garage had been towards the street certainly would have, would impede that, uh, that nicety.
This is their house here, right?
True.
So this is where we're looking at the view and.
Yes.
So I didn't see anything either way.
Oh, we can.
You can see a little.
Yeah.
Roger, have any questions?
Uh, it's not questioned, but I, you know, I'll just make the comment that it is, I do find it a substantial, um, variance. And, uh, just eight feet isn't very much.
The only thing I can say is that they haven't, uh, to leave their equipment or whatever into the backyard if they had to.
That's true.
Mary Ann?
Difficult through your four prong test?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant, uh, I know we talked about, what are you getting on to this now? And moving about his view and what would happen if it was extended out the back?
You mean if it was put behind the house?
Yeah.
I'm just curious, on this extra room, it's already twelve feet wide and you're saying, oh, you'd have to come in some other way, but there's nothing there now in that back room, if the garage were put back there, there'd certainly be a way to access the house from that back twelve by twenty.
How would you get back there?
Huh?
How would you turn your car to get in there? You mean you, you'd have to access it from the side?
Yeah, are you talking, talking about? The garage being located where the patio currently is, is that what you're saying?
I don't know what's back there.
Yeah.
Well, there's a, there's a.
That's not possible, but we're saying.
Yeah, there's a patio right there, but.
The pool in the backyard.
What's that?
The scrubber back.
Yeah.
It used to be a pool, it's, that's gone, right?
I guess what I'm saying is to do almost like an L shape, you could have a little hallway or whatever and then your.
The garage could go behind the house.
Right, and we still have windows or whatever for your bedroom or whatever is back there.
So are you suggesting L shape being this way and then this way?
Yeah.
Uh, air conditioners back there.
This is a, this is a, where the bathroom and the bedrooms are back in here. Yeah, I don't know the ease of the turn going into meeting that, uh, structure and, you know, not wanting to put a structure right in front of the bedroom windows.
Well, I would say it could be extended out, it could be a patio area or something in there too.
I need, I need more of the issue, if it goes in the back is do you have enough room to go on the side of your house and make a right hand turn and go into your garage? As well, back out of your garage and come back out.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, you only got.
You may have, if you went in the backyard, you may have to push it, you know.
Yeah.
Towards the right side of the house more, a bit deeper in order to do that.
Further offset it to the right side.
Then it would be, what's in the back of your house, you know, on the inside, you have, edge of the back, kind of kitchen back there. You'd be able to make an access point somewhere to go into the garage, cause that's what you guys are wanting, you're gonna be able to get out of your cars and walk into the house for your garage.
Right. From there, no, not without tearing apart bedrooms and bathrooms.
I'd rather bring it forward. If, if, you know, if you.
We're just having to look at ways to minimize the variance.
Sure.
Yeah.
And if there's other avenues that are available, that is, well, trying to explore.
Yeah.
Sure.
I would prefer to bring it forward than to bring it back. Just because of the ease in getting in and out. I could see me just putting it right through, right through the cedar fence.
I mean, obviously if it was put in the front, it wouldn't be forty five feet long, I don't know that there'd be an assessment for forty five feet. Most garages, it's twenty, you know, twelve by twenty four, it would be the size of a one car garage.
But then that, so you're, where the car on the right is parked is where you're.
It's for rent.
Thinking about bringing it forward.
Oh, right there.
That's where, which would.
Oh, that's the entrance to our house.
Right, so it'd be a perfect walkway to go in.
So.
You would want it in front of those two windows. You would want it in front of those two windows.
Yeah.
Those are two windows that were in the car's car.
Yeah, that's.
Those are the only windows.
If you did that, you'd have to put in a new front door. You can't exit your house through the garage.
That's right there.
As a, as a legal egress. I mean, people do it, but you have to have a primary egress that can't exit into the garage. So one of those three windows in the very front would have to become a door in order to do that.
Is there any thought to taking the width down to ten feet with that first? Then it'd be a.
Well, we took a look at it, and it gets pretty narrow. I mean, that's, that's undersized for, you know, garage specifications as far as width goes. I'm not sure you.
Well, just, you know.
Yeah. We did have discussions about that ourselves.
Even eleven, we thought, might be better than, than ten. An extra foot.
Yeah.
Nine-foot line to get in, six inches to get out.
It'd be very tight.
So I guess I need to also ask, is this extra room that you said was a patio behind this old garage?
Right.
Is that part of this variance for a five?
No, because it's rarely going to the side. Are you saying like the in-between where the house, the box?
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's not really there.
Oh, because it's going to be within a variance if it's not built with a garage.
No.
Right, so.
If they come back and build that there without the garage, it'd still be here for a variance.
Right, but with the garage, it's okay because it's, that's the furthest out. I just want to make sure we're not.
Okay. I get you.
We're still hanging up on the first one, and is our, or benefit can be achieved by other means feasible. I don't see necessarily undesirable change in the neighborhood character or nearby properties. Whether the request is substantial and you're looking at how many feet?
Eight.
Well, you're providing it, but you're giving a variance of twenty-two.
Right.
Which is a substantial portion of it. And whether the request is, will have adverse physical or environmental effects. Whether it's self-created or not, which doesn't necessarily negate us from granting the variance, so. I'll let somebody say something else besides me.
I just need to be clear on the variance. It's, right now, it's a maximum amount that can be achieved is already non-conforming at twenty feet. Need thirty, or eight, twenty-eight.
Right.
Right? So what are we asking for for a variance?
Right now, because they surveyed and they said they have twenty-two on one, eight on the other.
Correct.
So now you're asking for a twenty-foot.
Twenty-foot variance on the twenty-eight.
Twenty-foot portion, yeah, right.
So we need a twenty-foot variance. And my confidence, you know, even with the alternatives, I don't know that it's feasible with the structure of the house and where the layout of the bedrooms are. I don't know that it can be achieved by putting it in the back logistically, nor narrowing it down from twelve.
We could do a detached garage, but I mean, I understand for their health and safety that they wanted to be able to get out of the garage and walk in to the house.
Because if it was detached, it'd only be ten feet in this area, in this zoning, in the side yard.
Yeah.
So it'd be a two-foot variance.
Right, it just.
Maybe more than that, because obviously they'd be.
The safety aspect that they're trying to achieve is all, essentially, are.
So the fact that it's within the neighborhood, I, I guess I would make a motion to approve it.
Oh, sorry, good.
Show of hands on that. And roll call vote.
Andrew Yale.
No.
Roger Black.
No.
Vassal LaFors.
Yes.
Mary Ann Alexander.
Yes.
Patrick DuHane.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your speed is getting across this. You guys can be next week. You're ready to start, finish the process of the.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Have a good night.
Next appeal, Tim and Melissa Frederick. They are appeal number twenty-two eighty-one, a tenant, Smokey Ridge Drive. They're also asking for an air variance, the request to be allowed to construct an eight-by-sixteen front porch was not, does not meet fifty-foot front yard setback in an R-two district. It's encroaching twenty-five feet into the front yard setback, leaving twenty-five plus to the property line. Alan has the details that were provided to us.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, this is Walls Hill Road here. This is Smokey Ridge, comes around this way. Duran Road's over here. They're in the middle, right here, this lot. So this is all zone R-two, where across the roads are five. This is their house here. This is what it looks like this morning. And what they're doing is they're looking to put front porch, here it goes over to the side. So this is their proposed location of the porch and stuff. So kind of similar to the, the one you had previously on the, in the R-one air, but this is in R-two area.
I'm a little confused why there's a line there of fifty-eight feet to the house.
That's from the centerline of the road.
Centerline of the road.
So basically, we subtracted the twenty-five feet from that measurement, and that's where you got all the rest of the measurements from.
So that leaves us with thirty-three feet.
Your existing front little porch there?
Yeah.
What size is that?
It's like a six-by-eight. But there's no rail or anything for social purposes.
So you're basically going out two feet further.
Yeah.
Because it's not conforming to start with, right?
Yes. Most of the steps.
Most of the steps. I don't think they're going to have any steps, or one step.
Might be like one now, if it could be anything, yeah.
Public hearing portion, the meeting, anybody here like to speak to this matter?
I don't see anybody raise a hand. If they're close to public hearing portion, I mean.
Comments? This did not go down the counting.
So this is already pre-existing non-conforming?
Yes, and they're looking, basically, it's two feet more than my.
Can you go back and picture the front of their house and just do the scene? So you're saying that?
That though.
Okay, so that's four foot or?
Six foot.
Six by eight.
And you're going to stay at that same level, right?
Yeah.
Just railings and one step.
Railings and step, yeah, making it a little safer for us to.
Oh, sure.
Yeah. More appealing, doesn't look too good now.
All right, whether the benefit can be achieved by other means by the applicant and. It's nothing too terrible, wanting to have a little bit more room out in the front of the place. Undesirable change in neighborhood character to nearby properties is going to be an improvement. Whether the request is substantial and is basically two foot, which is not much at all. And whether the requests will have adverse physical or environmental effects, I don't see any of those appearing, so.
This is only three feet, three and a half feet more than the code required coming out of the house, four and a half feet.
Yeah. Anybody else?
I'll make a motion to approve of that.
That is okay, second, second. Anyhow, show of hands on that? Roll call.
Andrew Yale.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Vassal LaFors.
Yeah, just one comment, though, and we have to go through the four-prong test, if not?
Just did.
Okay, but as far as alternatives, why not stick with the six foot without having to go out more than, to minimize the variance?
If you had a chair out there or whatever, I would walk off the edge.
Getting older, we want a four-foot. For a life of better service, I guess.
Sixteen foot long, it's not.
Yeah.
It's not just four.
Well, the variance probably is with the front of the yard, not with the length.
Right, I'm just saying for setting purposes, there's plenty of room to set in six. You're making it wider by double, double, double.
Spooch it up a little bit.
Yeah.
So I'm just looking for alternatives.
Said yes. You said yes.
When?
Point of sale, Doug.
No, I didn't say yes.
I think it's your vote right now.
It's my vote?
Yes.
So I make sure we covered all.
Mary Ann Alexander.
Yes.
Patrick DuHane.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, good night.
Thank you, too.
Again, make up please, come back in next week.
Oh, I said, yeah, but.
You guys want to do this? You want to take a break? You guys want to?
That's good.
Next appeal is with Daniel Seines slash Mall, Ross Dresswels, sixty, Smithfield Boulevard. We have several variances they're going to be asking. We're going to go through them all and then go one by one by one with you. Kind of give you the overall and a new T in our newly named T-five zone. They're asking for area variances. This one's first is an area before we get to the other ones. Request to be allowed to place a two-hundred-and-forty-two square foot exterior sign on the building. That would be ninety-four sque, ninety-four square feet above the allowable, hundred-and-forty-eight square feet, as well as place a second, third, and fourth, and fifth building sign that exceeds the number of signs allowed in the T-five center zone. To not try to confuse you guys, Alan's got a few of these, just the renderings that were submitted to us and where, where, where they are on the actual building structure.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, just so everybody, everybody knows, this is the mall, and we are looking at the old Best Buy area of that. So it's all zone T-five. So this is back when it was Best Buy. So this is the spaces they're looking at taking. The, the first sign that we talked about is the big sign that's going to go right up here. Then they also have one on this side, one on this side, and two oval signs that go down here. Okay, so there'll be another sign here on this side as well. So here's what it looks like this morning. So again, they're looking at just keeping the structure by putting their sign across here. Putting another larger sign here. There'll be an oval sign down here. There'll be an oval sign down here. And then on this side, there'll be another sign over on this side. That's the five signs that we're talking about. So here's the rendering. So I've broken this out into variance number twenty-two eighty-two is the front sign. That's this sign right up here that's going across. You can see a little blue oval here, a little blue oval here. That'll come up later. Twenty-two eighty-three will be the sign on the left side, so the one facing target. Twenty-two eighty-four will be the sign on the right side, I believe, that's facing J.C. Penney's. And these are those little ovals that are right down here at the bottom on each. Mr. Daniels, all yours.
Okay, so this is the signage package that Ross sent to us to approve in our, in our community. The, the front main sign, which is this, this whole area, this space here, which is the existing, the pre-existing sign that was there, which was Best Buy, was approximately two-hundred-and-fifty square feet. And so this one is two-hundred-and-forty square feet, so approximately four percent less or so is what this drawing is based on. These little round placards are something they've been doing in a lot of plazas and malls, just for extra exposure on sidewalks and people walking, pedestrians. And they're the size of one of these ceiling tiles. That's as big as that placard is. It's just a two-foot by four-foot panel that is, is in two places on this location. So I don't know if we should stop with just this front and try to get, get through the, the front main sign maybe first and then work our way to the other ones? I guess it's probably the simplest, but.
Okay.
So this is the main sign, which is the, the first variance. And so there, there was potentially two variances in the beginning. I guess the code is changing. I was just being informed of as of Friday. There is no more three-foot height requirement for the signage, and so now it's use the square footage as you would like. So, so originally, there was a heights restriction issue for the variance, and then over, over square footage.
It still is today's Tuesday.
Today is Tuesday, yes, yeah. And so, and this letter, the height here is sixty-six inches, and, and right now, the current code is three feet. But again, as of Friday, that doesn't exist. The customer's trying to keep things moving and going, and keep everything going in motion. So we're trying to proceed with what the steps are, not at the table, push out a month and keep everything going, so they can get, build schedules and, and everything proceeding.
So you're looking for determination on this tonight and not a, of course, you can say, you want to vote tonight on every single one?
Well, I would like to take the, the code changing in, in three days in determination. I don't think that's not realistic in three days.
That was what was voted on at the last onboard meeting?
Yeah.
I don't know.
We're still looking at two-hundred-and-forty-five square feet and being over by whatever it is, too. The, the height of the letters may be insignificant come Friday, but still the size of the sign.
Right.
And we already updated the code two revisions ago to allow more square footage specifically for the mall stuff, because they have a wider thing. And they're still exceeding this, so.
And I'll start with the two. And favor. And we do have one from our attorney.
Would you like me to open the public hearing portion of the meeting?
Before the attorney?
Yeah. Oh, wouldn't he be part of the public hearing?
No, you guys can go with your own.
Oh, then read it, go ahead.
So besides two-thirty-nine, Matt, not being able to, Mr. Fadro not being able to be here. He wrote, Dear Board, I write this with some points to consider an appeal twenty-two eighty-two, Ross Dresswels. This is a significant request, especially for the business that is not open yet. I do not recall when or if all the board has granted variances for signage specifically under the new code for a business that has not been opened. It is virtually impossible for the applicant to prove the benefit cannot be achieved by other means necessary when the business is not open. When the application does not say, for instance, why advertising in a different means, print online, cannot achieve this desired goal. If the board were to grant this, I would highly recommend stating very specific facts of the record as to what sets this applicant apart from others that have come before and denied. The applicant itself is devoid, devoid of any specifics as to why this variance is needed, other than the typical, most national brands have a specific size, type, and layout for signage and branding to ensure consistency. A variance needs to be based, based a need for instant applicant that sets this applicant apart, not the desire for national consistency.
The biggest factor for the front, for this main sign essentially, is to not consider the heights restriction based, because that's changing in a couple of days, and is the square footage requirement, I guess, is the biggest thing to focus on.
And you're allowed, I remember.
We're allowed, just shy of one-fifty, I think, compliance, one-forty-eight, I think. Yeah. Yep, the Best Buy that was there was two-fifty, and, and they have reduced it to fit, one of their signage programs, they have their packages to fit the certain size.
Can I read something that's on, on your sign application? If any signage proposed in this exhibit is altered by local government authorities, Ross Stores, Inc., reserves the right to at no cost, adjusts the architectural features to best accommodate the altered signage. Okay?
In other words, they're willing to amend.
Yes.
Yeah, they're willing to bend.
I, and where did that come from? That was in.
There, there you go. Right here. See a circle?
There's nobody yet.
That's where it is.
Okay, all right.
Okay, not to mention.
Public hearing portion of the meeting?
Oh, can I say one more thing?
Sure.
You're going by a Best Buy sign that was in codes, how many code variations ago?
Yeah.
You got to follow current, current code, not, you can't keep saying, well, this store had this that was approved in two thousand, and this store had this in nineteen ninety-nine. We're twenty-twenty-three now, okay? And, and the codes are updated for a reason.
Right, well, in the last instance, the porch was six feet, which was pre-existing non-conforming, and that was pre-existing non-conforming, and they were just asking for additional size from that.
Right, but this is not pre-existing. The sign is pre-existing, the business has been vacant for how long, a couple of years? That goes away.
It is, yeah, it is what it is.
Now, that building falls under the current zoning codes.
That's fine. It's, this is, this is what the customer's asking for, and this is what I'm presenting to you, like, we can only sway them. We can only sway them so much. They want to ask for it, that's what they ask for. And then they have to make their decisions from that.
And they're willing to amend depending on what the local town government is willing to accommodate.
Okay.
All right, the public hearing portion of the meeting is open. Whoever would like to speak to this matter, microphone is yours.
Hey, I guess I will. Rosmane Operations, Chamberlain Center. Part that you mentioned, that was there since the beginning. Even though there's been multiple revisions of the size of the sign, they always keep that in there because that's something that they want to cover their butt on. For any, it doesn't matter if it's this location or any other location. So that's always going to be there. You're also going to see a section in there that says that if the sign is not approved, that the landlord has to, you know, outline that. No, that's not going to be correct because we have, you know, said to them multiple times through an email that that is not going to happen. Landlord is supplying as is, you're on your own. But they still kept that portion within their plans even though we identified it as not changing. So that will always, that section that you had, that's always there. So it's not, it's not like you caught something. It's just, it was just there. So obviously, I've been dealing with this process for a year. So we already know that, you know, they've reduced their sign in the front. They're asking for the wedge in the back. They're going to square off the wedge. It's not going to be the same thing. But is that different from what the town is asking for what we are yet? We already know that we only want the frontage based upon my emails with, you know, Alan before. The one on the Target side, that's not even going to be, that's just going to be painted a square and then a sign paste on or just put on there. So that's going to be the third sign. The circles on the front, I understand the town's comment with the circles on the front. I attribute those signs on the front as, you know, the wheat on, you know, Starbucks that wasn't approved. That's the same thing with the eaves or whatever. The main thing that we're looking for is obviously, you know, Jesse's got to do his job. I mean, this has nothing to do with me because it's not a pyramid build. It's a store build. So I have nothing to do with the signage. So obviously, he's got a job to do. He's looking for the two sides. He's looking for the main one. Blair wants him to do the two circles. We already understand how that's going to go. But as for the height of the sign, we already know that we're what? Three days late or three days early of what's going to be happening on Friday? We already know that, you know, the height of 36 inches is crazy when you're 185 feet from Smithfield Boulevard. It's just like, you know, saying if, you know, Walmart or Sam's Club wanted to change their sign to a different design, they're going to come in front of the board and say, hey, we want a bigger sign. You're going to say, sorry, it's only three feet high. I don't see that happening, but I'd love to show up for that meeting just to see that, how that goes. So obviously, they're looking for 148 feet or, no.
148.
Yeah, there's allowed.
It's allowed.
Yeah, five. They're looking for a higher than that. Three days. I mean, three days for the sign. I, we go the square footage. We go above three feet.
This one's, this variance is for square footage.
Yeah.
The square footage doesn't change whether it's today or Friday.
Well, the sign height changes and I got 14 letters. It's still.
It still has to be 148 square feet.
Yeah, regardless of how high it, you're still, you're asking for 200.
Yeah, you're dipping up your square footage.
Their letters that they're looking for is five inches, five feet, six inches. And we're only limited, you know, 36 inches, so.
We're not even saying that right now. We're just saying the total square footage.
Square footage, yeah.
150 square feet.
Yeah. I would just like to see something positive come out of this. I mean, we all know that, you know, property variances differ greatly from sign variances. But I would love to see something positive come out of the.
And this is, as said, it's a new T5 commercial zone that we're doing by, everything's changing, obviously.
Majority of this existing signage at the mall is all runs around that, you know, 200, 250, you know, 300 square foot for their main sign. And then their sign signs are, you know, 100 to 150 square feet. That's what is on the building existing. So whatever value it is to you, that's what's mostly there on each property. Whether it's JCPenney's, Kohl's, Target, Dick's Sporting Goods, whatever it may be, that's pretty much where they kind of fall. They're all, they're all above what the square footage is allowable to the building. It's too bad there wasn't like a special multiplier like they did with Consumer Square back in the day. Or they gave them a specific multiplier above and beyond when they built it. And then that way we wouldn't have to do the additional because it is so far off the road. And it is its own little campus, you know, further away. So it's too bad instead of getting like a 60%, that they'd be allowed 100%. And then now it's cut and dried and it would save the aggravation.
Mr. Daniels, that is too bad. That's not the job of this board. That's the job of the applicant or the owner. So for you to sit there and talk to them about, too bad we don't have that, you need to be talking to those two people sitting over there, not this board on that.
Well, maybe that's something we can actually try working on one day.
Maybe they should.
And that would save some aggravation in time and that they would get 100% multiplier, you know, based on the distance off the road.
They can always propose it. Then the board will act on it.
So that's something we should probably work on someday.
Okay, that's for now.
But that's.
I would like to say something else. Hi, I'm Lisa Getty. I'm the general manager of Chamberlain Center. And I do want to acknowledge, I totally appreciate what you're saying as far as what was there before does not mean that what goes there now can do the same thing. I am only pointing it out as a matter of comparison proportionally that it is similar to what Best Buy had, just so that when you picture it, you know, Best Buy had three signs with 355 square feet and they had front signage and also on both sides. So, so yes, I realize that doesn't apply to this tenant, but I just want to point out it is not anything different than what had been there just in terms of visualization. And I did want to touch on something that was in the attorney's notes about advertising. I guess, I don't, I mean, I know signage is part of a store's brand and advertising, but in my mind, signage in these instances with shopping centers and so forth is not so much about advertising. Yes, they can do newspaper advertising, television advertising, digital advertising. This to me is more about identification of the location. The store does jut out, as you saw from the balance photos, juts out from the main part of the mall. And so the side signage is really serving as identification from either side. If an emergency vehicle or an ambulance was to come in from either side of the mall, they wouldn't see the sign from the front. And the front signage is so far set back from Smithfield Boulevard, it's not a distraction to drivers. I mean, I think a lot of these signage codes are understandably, we don't want every road looking like, you know, Vegas signs and, you know, all chaotic and so forth. But the mall as a whole sits so far back, I don't think that the distraction to drivers or impact on the neighborhood is as much of an issue on a property like this. So I just wanted to point that out, that for me it's about identification. This retailer, actually, if you go on their website, this store is going to be the only store in all of the Northeast. It's going to be a huge draw. We certainly are hoping so anyway. Their closest store is states away, hours away. So we do want this to be something that customers and anyone else coming near the property can easily identify and recognize its location. Thank you.
Anybody else here would like to speak to this matter? And not seeing anybody, we'll close the public hearing portion of the meeting and go on with our question and answer period, I guess.
Jesse, could you just answer, in your calculation of the 242 square feet, does that include the two small signs? Because I can't.
No, it's just this sign here. These are eight, these are eight square feet additional.
So those two smalls are different variants?
We're going to go one.
Thought it was because it was on this page.
That's why I figured we'd start with this one first. This is the critical. This is what the most important is. And so I wanted to focus on this one. And then whatever happens, happens.
Yeah, right. So if we want to go that way, this is our, from Matt's line, we have what Marianne started with. You have new orders. That was two feet over there going. There was a board of people that made this decision. Not once did we see them off, not once did we see anybody else in hand. There was a board that said, not only twice, we shrink sizes to be more environment for the neighborhood to more into here. This is 100 and.
100.
148 allowed, the rest were 242. These are little numbers, big numbers.
Going back to Nissan and all these other places, I mean, they came in requesting signage variances before we occupied as well. So I don't know that the verbiage, I guess, in Matt's discussion is 100% accurate. And my, from what I recall, I don't know if I'm misspeaking or not. Okay, so. So I don't know if that would be an audit, I guess.
The thing of it is, right now, it is T5, which is a brand new zone for the town. And it is also precedent setting. I know we just did. Shoe department over on the south.
Yep, and they've got their second additional sign on the side.
Okay, so I have a question.
Yep.
When we did runnings, they wanted to have all kinds of words across the top. They cut them all off, okay? You can put that, how about just Ross? How much, if you got rid of Dress for Less?
Yep.
Would that, would that bring that sign into conformity?
It's not 121 square feet.
They won't do that. It has to be the whole, that's their whole name, I guess, essentially. So it has to be just like that. That wasn't an option as far as, we can cut other things out if we need to be, you know, essentially. But the Ross Dress for Less, they will have to keep that.
That is the tenant's brand name. That would be like saying, can you just say, oh, it's a lovely, lovely, Ross Dress for Less is their name, so.
Yeah.
That needs to stay. If the whole thing needs to come down in size, that's one thing, but we can't take away it worse.
Yep.
Going back to some of the other businesses that have asked for variances, whether it's now or in the past, the litmus test to determine whether that variances was approved, I guess, is what I'm trying to grapple in my head with. They've all said based on, I mean, this whole mall thing has been an issue since I've been on the board. You guys know more than I do, been here longer than that, but. It's difficult, I guess, with a new, not necessarily just with the new zoning laws, but what process went through the minds of the boards in the past to either accept or deny a request for a sign variance.
The original way, way, way back was simply the sign, the mall came up with a detailed list of all the different sizes and signs that they had on the various and everything else. And as long as the new store was coming in, that would fit into those square footages.
Pre-determined.
And they would just get a new sign.
But since then, we've had Target, we've had Best Buy, we've had, that shoe store wanted to put a sign on the front of the mall because they were on the backside of the mall. We approved that, DWS. So I'm just looking at if the board looked at those in their own, whatever the variant, I mean, there was still a variance. Regardless if it was this code or the old code, that to me doesn't matter. It has to do with more of the process.
We tried to, we tried to cut down the variances because before it was your max 50 square feet, no matter how long the building was. It was still half a square foot per linial foot, up to max 50 square feet. With all of these and as well as industrial buildings, because they're so long, they have these small signs or coming in here and getting variances for larger signs. So we doubled that. He said now it's a maximum of 100 square feet. So you go up to 200 feet long. But they're still asking for it. So we just, so, you know, two codes ago, we changed it so they could get twice as much signage. It's still not enough.
With multipliers.
And because they're so far back, there's a 30 and a 60% multiplier. So this one here, when you talk about they're allowed 148 square feet, that's maxing out the 100, that's maxing out 60% to get to 148. And they still want 90 some square feet over that.
So we have been, every ordinance that do it, one ordinance changed, second ordinance even more, then the multiplier. All the issues they brought up, we addressed it. And then said, finally, this is it. This is with a double, double multiplier with the distance. And it's still.
This goes back to Kohl's. When Kohl's was in here and all people come marching here saying how, you know, they didn't like this because of Kohl's, we weren't giving the signs. Kohl's wasn't going to come, but that was ridiculous. Remember that? And we compromised on saying, hey, JCPenney's got 150 square feet, so Kohl's, you can get 150 square feet. Then we changed the ordinance so that they wouldn't actually have to get a variance based on the width of the building. If I remember correctly, I think Hobby Lobby didn't even use the multiplier or something. They just went.
Right. The malls never complied to any sign ordinance. I don't believe it.
That's a good one.
I like to make that as a known starting point, but yes, it's never complied. It's a different entity. It's, you know, it's further off the road. It's a bigger property. It's a bigger building. And so, yes. There's a chance Hobby Lobby.
I have any idea what the size of, I guess, height, but certainly the width of the letters would be the same. If it were in compliance, what would that look like? What are we looking at?
So if we went with a compliance sign. And I'm going to use your compliance pretty close. The closest thing that I could come up with, a four-foot tall letter.
For the Ross.
For the Ross, yeah. And then, and then the overall length would be 41 feet long. And then that puts us at 164 square feet. That's the closest compliance that would comply based on doing math and scaling it in different sizes.
Right, scaling the letters all down proportionally.
Yeah.
It still doesn't comply.
And so that would put us over by, yes, put us over by.
12 square feet.
15 feet.
Yep.
160, 148.
I think we have to also change our thinking a little from the suggestion that this is, you know, how did we do it five years ago and eight years ago? The whole point, I think, of the center district with the center town, it was to change it to a different zoning area. And we've got to really, I think, give credence to that. Tom, just, that's my opinion.
That's good, yeah. You have.
I'm good.
So this is the first variant task part. I guess I'd like to just proceed with this one and make the decision of what is and isn't. And then proceed to the next one so it doesn't get messy. It's just cut and dried and simplified. I, this building is, you know, almost 200 feet long in width. Again, we were using what was there pre-existing just as a measuring stick of what is potential. And that's what we went with. And back in the day, the mall did, I don't know what happened to the paperwork on that, if that just got washed out or what. But there was a max number of the whole mall property could have, whatever, 200,000 square feet of signage. Use that how you wish. Give it to one guy, chop it up and move it along. I don't know how that got voted in or out and pushed with different sign codes, if that is.
It was just used as a reference.
Right.
This spreadsheet do we have?
O'Reilly didn't ask for more, right?
Huh?
O'Reilly, that was the first sign.
That was the first, that was the first sign that you guys denied and they put up in compliant for this T5 zone. But they're also, well, no, yeah, because you did a, no, on the backside.
They did a monument sign.
Well, they had to do one of that.
Kenny drugs one.
That one got voted approved for a measuring of 10 feet instead.
But that was a height thing there.
So Riley was the first one to challenge and block. That one you guys held to the square footage. And so then now what happens is now that the signage thing is going to change again next week, now.
It doesn't change the square footage. I don't really, I mean, to me, the height of the letters isn't really what we're talking about.
Well, I'm just being generic. I say the signage code is going to change again next week. And now that person could have something totally different, you know, for the road sign. And so that's a whole different animal now technically. So are they going to go back and spend additional costs now to modify that sign to comply and have it bigger, what they wanted originally?
Right.
Or is it just going to stay until some other day or other?
And that's part of when you want to ask for it. That's why we just mentioned. The new ordinance isn't going to affect until Friday. So if he's asking for something today, then they're asking for two variants, the height of it as well as the square footage of it. If they would like to withdraw or postpone the table until next month, they'd eliminate one variance.
But again, also this is square footage.
This is square footage.
We have to do it.
It's only what the day is. Front of you, you're going to tell that.
Yeah. Well, no, they'd like to move forward. They have to get things going into the build and get everything motioned and pushed through on their side. So if they'd like to proceed tonight, you know, with decisions of, I would like to not be held to the three, you know, foot tall letter. Or if you guys just approve it as it is, so be it. I guess that doesn't matter because if you approve the, a four-foot tall letter, then it doesn't matter if it's three or not. It just goes into the books, you know.
Well, I guess I have an issue with the fact that we're only looking at square footage and we're not even here to look at the height of the sign, or the letters. That's not in this request.
Yeah, if we approve, and I don't, just to clarify this, if we approve the sign that he's requesting, then we would have to. then we would have to approve a variance for the three-foot.
Well, based on what's here, we're only approving whether he gets two hundred and forty-two square feet or not.
Yeah, you, you're not approving that because that's not what's.
So he'd have to come, he'd have to go back and redo the, the letter sizing as of today, because all we're saying is, yep, you got two hundred square feet, go figure that out within the three-foot thing, or do you have to come back next month and request a three-foot?
Well, no, that's their next week, it wasn't that.
Wouldn't be, it wouldn't matter if it's Friday, because then it wouldn't be, wouldn't need a variance, we're only asking for square footage.
Yeah, so you just let me know the square footage, then I'll do the math and work it out to what fits, that, you know, complies with that.
Well, we really can't come up with anything.
That's it.
You know, we can't say we'll approve a certain square footage.
Well, he's asking over two hundred and fifty. You vote on yes or no, he's asking for.
I understand that. Well, we can't come up, we can't say, well, two hundred and twenty-five, yeah.
Uh, we haven't amended in, in prior meetings where they amended it to a four-foot tall sign, what would be the closest one, it would come out to a hundred and sixty-four square feet in, uh, in size. And, and so that would be an option that I could amend down to that for today and submit that.
That's not really an option for us.
Oh, you did it last time.
We did it in the shoe.
Does that mean that you have to do it tonight? Just because if you did something wrong before, you don't have to continue to go on doing the wrong thing? You have a, a request, but he said he wanted a vote for two hundred and fifty square feet.
Yeah.
There's no signage, there's nothing else. And if you don't feel comfortable not having a turn in here, you can cable it to.
I'd make a motion that we disapprove.
The two hundred and forty-eight.
Yeah, I'll second.
Need to go through your checklist.
Checklist, yeah. Do you wanna go down to the county?
Yeah, same thing, I said two thirty-nine and local.
Whether the benefit can be achieved by other means, it's both of the applicant and having different types of signs or sizes of signs is a possible. And desire would change in neighborhood character nearby properties, I don't see that. Whether the request is substantial and it's a hundred square feet over the allowed size, so that would be substantial. And whether the request will have adverse physical or environmental impact, I don't see any of that. We have, what was that? Roger, Roger made the motion, Patrick seconded, show hands on that, and a roll call vote.
Henry Hill.
Yes.
Fossil Forest.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Marion Alexandria.
Yes.
Patrick DuHin.
Yeah. Okay, so now the next one is going to, make sure we get this, North would be the next one.
So this is.
Yep, northwest side, yep, that's the one I did, yep.
That's the one facing towards Target.
Correct.
Yeah.
And so if, when we do the math, what's allowed by the town is, is a hundred and eight square feet, and what we are asking for is one twenty-seven, and so we're over by nineteen square feet on that sign.
So, you do some nice calculations there, now that means, means because it's not allowed there. So it's zero allowed, he's asking for this, it's that much over, okay? So he asks for a second sign, a hundred and twenty-seven point four square feet over the amount.
So yeah. A second sign is, is correct. We're asking for a second sign, and then we're over in square footage. The sign for Best Buy was on the other side originally, and they thought maybe the one on this side might best serve them facing Target from all entrance. So that was the one that would be their next favorable, was the side.
Why can't they use that sign to the front?
Denial asked for is denied.
Yeah.
Run to the next. You asked that question, he didn't even give you that answer.
And, and, well, I was trying to come up with the why or what the sizes were, but, I mean, the sign doesn't fit the size of the building. The building is, you know, a hundred and eighty-five square feet long, a hundred and eighty-five linear feet long.
Yeah.
You know, that sign's twenty feet.
Yeah.
So, you know, it just doesn't quite fit the, the spot. So, and what they are allowed is a hundred and forty-eight square foot, like over in front of the building already.
Yep.
Uh, this would be less than. So this sign is, if I do the math based on the building, you know, linear footage of, which is how we get the, the second sign in most cases, quote unquote, uh, you know, it put us over in nineteen square feet, based on that, if the size was allowed.
But it's not allowed, so it's a hundred percent over.
That's why I said if it was allowed. Yeah.
Again, the application that's in front of.
Pretty much all the exterior entrance, um, stores of the mall have a, a second additional sign. Kohl's, Best Buy did, Target, JCPenney's, ESW, Dick's Sporting Goods, and I'm forgetting somebody else.
Might as well ask a quick question. What's the height of the letters?
The heights of these letters are fifty-four inches, which will not matter in three days.
That's a good matter tonight, though. So now you have heights, signs, hundred, hundred percent, and it's not, not. Two thirty-nine and local report. Public.
And so can you, uh, can you, well, I guess it doesn't matter. The Best Buy sign that was there, can you show us that, Alan, again, on the side?
I didn't see when it was there.
Uh, one of your shots.
It was on the opposite side.
Yeah, it was on the opposite side, correct.
See, there's, there's that one.
That's the comparable, what's, what's happening on the.
But there was never one on that side.
Correct, correct, yep.
So Best Buy only had the two signs.
And so, and so then, again, going forward into the, once we get to the next step, they, they would rather have this sign than the next sign that was where Best Buy had it prior.
Okay.
Just based on the parking lot, tenants.
Justification.
Justification for which?
Having that sign there that's a hundred percent above, and the application.
And, and so justification is, all other buildings that have exterior entrances have two signs, is the one reason. And then the second reason is that the square footage is very similar to what was there prior of Best Buy, again, however you wanna value that.
It's on the other side for this sign.
Right, and so they, they just wanna shift it to this side of the building. It'd be something very similar, and they wanna put it on this side of the building, and this is the next priority, and so that's why I'm doing this one next. And then, if we guys vote this one in as a yes, then you make the next decision on the next one. No, we gave you the one on this side, we're gonna, we're gonna next the one on the other side. Well, no, it's not negotiation. You're, you're voting yes or no on this one, and then you're gonna vote yes or no on the next one. It's not, not a negotiation of. They would rather have this sign on this side versus where Best Buy chose to put it last time.
Public hearing.
Public hearing portion, the meeting's now open. Anybody here like to speak to this matter?
Well, I guess I'll just, I'll just reiterate kind of what I said before. Transferrability from Smithville Boulevard, you won't see that at all. It's really an identification if you're coming in from the side, both the customers, um, emergency vehicles, deliveries, that sort of thing, because this will be a brand new name in, in the market, so we just want to be easily identifiable. That's all. Thank you.
Just for clarification, they're gonna have the reader board sign out on the main and.
Yes, they'll be, they'll be equal swap, equal, very equal, you know, on the existing panel.
All right, anybody have any questions? It's the, the second sign, we're only one sign is allowed.
Business is not open yet. You can't prove with financial hardship, and you can't prove that nobody could find it, and so.
It's fallen down, so everyone hasn't gone there yet.
Well.
Just saying. Those are the arguments for the sign.
Plant fitness, we only allowed the front sign, and then they came back a year later to get the back sign, and they approved financial hardship, I guess. So, that's the way I'm looking at it. So.
I mean, again, just the last meeting that we went to here, you approved the second sign for the Shoe Department facing I-87, which is, you know, the exact same situation. There was an existing sign that was there, there's an existing sign here. Asking for similar size, asking for similar size.
It was not an existing sign.
Yes, I guess, on the specific side of the building.
Not the sign.
It's on the other side of the building, and if we next that one, they'd rather have this one.
No, I understand what you're saying.
Okay, so it's, it's the same situation as, as the Shoe Department. It's a, it's a second additional sign, it's not conforming, and that's over asking for. The same, same exact situation.
The frontage, plant fitness and Shoe Department, they both front on the, you know, on an off ramp, and that's why they wanted their signs back there, so that when you got off the off ramp, you knew that's where it is, you need to have, you had to make a right-hand turn to come down because their signage is based interior. There was, there was no frontage sign out on Route Three anywhere else to show where that thing is. This one has a frontage sign as long as they comply now, that's gonna face Smithville Boulevard. We do the same thing for Kohl's. We put one on the front, one on the back, because the back actually faced I-87. Hobby Lobby didn't want one on the back, so.
But again, all, all the other businesses have two signs on the mall. Every single one of them have exterior entrances. They all have two signs, and they all run about the same size, around a hundred square feet in size. Dick's Sporting Goods, Kohl's.
All under the old ordinance.
Real old.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna have to make the motion.
I guess it's up to me. I'll make a motion, we deny it.
All right. We have a second.
Second.
Got it there, it was. All right, show of hands on that? Everybody has a split decision here. Roll call vote.
Henry Hill.
No.
Fossil Forest.
No.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Marion Alexandria.
Yes.
Patrick DuHin.
No.
Okay, next one. You said three who didn't agree with the denial, two denial. So now it's one of the three wanna make a motion to accept it? Because that's what you're saying, right? You three didn't agree with that, so unless you further discuss it, you should be, you, one of you three should be making a motion to accept the sign as this, which is the three feet as well as the square foot.
Unless you have further discussion.
I just, I mean, with the new code in place, it makes it very difficult to look at these things and say what used to be compared to what it is today. And that's where I have a certain amount of feeling that, I know in the past, Panera Bread.
Yeah, certain experience.
You don't vote on feelings?
I don't. But the experience was for Panera Bread, I believe we did a side sign, and then because of traveling in from the back entrance area, and that was years ago with the old Panera Bread.
Right. So you have to make a motion.
Oh, I'm not making a motion.
No?
No. I am, I am not convicted in, in either direction, and so I'm not gonna make a, a motion to deny our approval.
Me neither.
And my reservations are much of what we're talking about, and I understand that we have these codes, we've changed the codes, and we do it, and we continue to do it based on businesses that wanna do business in this town, and as a board member trying to make that decision, when every time some, that's why we're here, I have a very big conflict as to the reasoning, um, because those reasons have been used in the past, and now we're saying no because we have a new ordinance. Well, then, that mean that there's no reason to have a variance request because the bottom line is, the new ordinance is there, and we're gonna hold our feet to the fire come hell or high water. And so I have a, I, I, whether it's a discussion amongst, I don't know. So I can't really say for or against the, uh, the situation right now.
Now we're hung board.
Yeah, yep, we're hung. What do you mean?
It's denied. It's not approved, so it's a denied. You have to have a positive vote, so that's why I was saying it's on. Now the discussion is done. It doesn't get passed.
Unless you wanna table.
Unless you wanna table.
I'm just trying to think of the timing of when they need to vote.
It doesn't hurt you to table it.
Yeah, it's just timing.
It's just time for you, whether you accept it or move forward on these.
Well, it does, because now there's a vote for the next one and the next one. What did he say? He wants to negotiate. Well, you don't negotiate.
Well, we're not negotiating. We're just saying, for him, it doesn't matter whether we, we table, or whether he tables it or not, because if he doesn't, then it gets denied, well, then it's dead. If he tables it, I don't know.
If it gets tabled, then what's, what's, there are timelines whatsoever, like if it's a couple months out or after, I mean, it's a lot of issues.
Oh, I mean, for me, we've never had it the other way where it hasn't got anything, so, and maybe Steve's correct, I don't know. If I was on the board, I would, as a board, I would motion to table it, to make sure what just happened is legal through the attorney, since he's not here. So he's not tabled, but you guys would table it to make sure that you two made a motion and voted not to do it, you three didn't wanna make any other kind of motion. What is the outcome? I'll have the attorney to, tell you what the outcome is, and then you can proceed next month from there.
No positive vote is no vote.
Make a motion, we table it.
Second. Show of hands. We need, we need a roll call vote.
Henry Hill.
Yes.
Fossil Forest.
Yes.
Roger Black.
No.
Marion Alexandria.
Yes.
Patrick DuHin.
Yeah. Now we can go to the next one.
Smithville Eighty-four, so it's on the opposite side.
Same thing, two eighty-eight, local issue, same thing with Matthew, the same, uh, same hand answer, same one that I read into the record for the first one. Uh, it's additional signage not allowed in a T5 zone.
Here's a photo, here's a photo with the sign in place on.
Right.
Well, you didn't see, but, yeah. So that shows it in place.
Right. That was by their install area for their speaker system.
Um, yeah, it kinda faces the loading docks, if you will, actually, and then faces towards JCPenney's and that parking lot for people coming in the mall entrance, the first mall entrance, if you will, uh, coming from mouth free.
Right.
Yeah. So just give them some visual in that direction.
Public hearing portion being now open, anybody wanna speak? I hope close to public hearing portion being, and they were in the same process as this one as we were with the last one, so it would be a matter of tabling this one also.
Well, you table it before even voting?
No, I'm just saying, that was my statement.
Oh.
That was all, I was making a statement. So would anybody like to make a motion to have this table because it's the same process as the last sign we just looked at? Is that legal?
Don't know.
Well, attorney's not here.
No. So can we table it based on the.
You can table anything you want, but you're not now hearing an applicant. You didn't ask her anything, you didn't say anything, there's no argument. What are you tabling it on? If each one, this is a brand new.
Jesse, can you give us your argument for this sign?
Exactly. If you have no argument for or against, you gotta table, this is still another, it's a brand new field number, brand new info, so, uh, if you're going.
You just said everything you said was already said because you said on the last sign.
To set the table to make sure if there's an Article seventy-eight, to make sure that if you get Article seventy-eight, it got pretty sloppy there. So to set the rules, to go through the balancing check that you didn't also go through the last time, to make sure you go through the balancing test. The first one that was denied, he went through the balancing test. It didn't meet it, it's not open, to going through several of those to kinda keep it a little sharp.
So I would go through your checklist, and then I would poll the board members and see if they're gonna, if they're in the same mindset as the last one.
We're gonna let Jesse make his little spiel.
The drawing that's up there is a, a sign that's a hundred and twenty-seven square feet approximately, that's on the side of the sign, of the building, facing the JCPenney area for customers coming in from that direction, people that are pulled up to JCPenney's and walking in and don't know Ross exists, that they could still see it. People from everywhere, Canada, wherever it may be, that are unaware that this is happening in our area, that we have a new store. And so that's where they can see it. There was an existing sign there, that's the Best Buy sign, that's this one here, that's approximately the same size that was there up until when the store closed. This is what the customer'd like to proceed with, that's the square footage of a hundred twenty-seven square feet. And now it's in your hands.
Thank you.
Whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant, and as was stated, they do have meterboard signs on both sides of the mall property, and they could actually have directional signs also stating their location. Undesigned will change the neighborhood character, it is the mall, and it will, times whether the request is substantial, it would be substantial because of the fact that there is only one sign allowed for the building. And whether the request will have adverse physical or environmental effects, I do not see anything.
I make a motion to deny.
Again, every other business has an exterior entrance, has two signs on the mall.
Are you gonna open this one up to public?
I did.
Oh, sorry. Okay, sorry.
Yeah, would you like to say something else?
I just had a question, and I'm not trying to be, I just wanted to clarify something you said, cuz, and maybe, maybe it wasn't how I interpreted it, but did you say they are allowed to have directional signs?
Yeah, that'd be three square feet.
Yeah.
Like on the property or what do you mean?
Yeah.
We can do extra signs on the property, Josh.
You get up to three square feet?
Oh, you mean just for the grand opening part, though?
No, no.
Oh, they have that?
The side is three square feet.
Three square feet, yeah.
There's an arrow on it.
There's some height requirements also.
Okay, alright, I didn't know that, thank you.
We're closing again now.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, so we're, Roger said.
I made a motion.
To deny, okay, we got a second? Nobody's seconding.
So I make a motion to table this one as well?
Alright, second. And show of hands on that? And a roll call?
Henry Hill.
Yes.
Basil La Force.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Marian Alexander.
Yes.
Patrick DuHue.
Yes. Now, these are the logo plaques, if you wanna call them, uh, that are below the main entrances on both sides, similar to the runnings ones that we discussed, the fishings and other, and other ones, and the total square footages of these are
Eight square feet. Each. On the street.
The, uh, beginning of it, uh, again, appeal twenty-two eighty-five, uh, Matt's response was one, this for each one. Uh, not read that into the record, and it was a two thirty-nine and a half referral down in the county, which they also said was a issue. So if you'd like to.
It's interesting to see that the oval only has Ross on it. Where's the dress for less underneath it?
That's a good point, Alan.
Point it out. They don't do that.
You see that?
Yeah.
They don't, they don't do that, though.
That's a good point, Alan.
Well, if you go down south, they're all their stores, Ross, best for less, on everyone's their sign.
But now, but now you see one that's.
Unless they just didn't show up for the small rendering, but we just put it as a variable, I'm not saying it is, but I just remember that. Yeah. Yeah, that's something they're doing with, uh, their big stores, you know, it's, uh, sometimes it's a hundred feet or plus or minus from the entrance to where the, the end of their property line, these spaces, and so just to get people heading towards the right direction, they, they put them on the sidewalk areas and funnel around the, the perimeter. And some of them have multiple, I've seen some of the, the blueprint drawings of other locations, had five, six of them around the building in different locations of just that block area.
They've already built before.
Yeah. Yeah, and so there, each one is the size of ceiling tile, or two feet by four feet, and there's, there's two of them, one in ten building.
Public hearing portion of the meeting is now open. And if anybody wanted to speak, come on.
No, no, that is.
To our board members for their comments.
I don't see the need, uh, for these additional signs on the front of the building. Even if, uh, they had the name hundred forty-eight, that, I think it's an excess, but I just, I don't. I don't see an argument that substantiates the approval of it, so.
So, would you make any motion then to?
I was just looking to open the discussion, having known that you were ready for a motion. And when I'm saying, I didn't want to squash that ability.
The balancing test.
Well, yeah, you will.
That's why I didn't make a motion.
Whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant, which I stated earlier, there's a couple different options there. Undesigned will change the neighborhood character, I don't see that, and whether the request is substantial, it can be considered substantial because it is one sign allowed. And whether the request will have adverse physical or environmental effects, I don't see any of those. So, that's where we're at.
This is for one or two?
For two, that's for both sides.
So I make a motion that we deny.
I can break into two if you'd like.
A second?
We can do this again.
And roll call vote?
Henry Hill.
Yes.
Basil La Force.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Marian Alexander. Patrick DuHue.
Yes.
Thank you for your time. You're halfway there.
Thank you.
Patrick's saying, keep going, go on, so.
Oh, good golly. Phew, thanks, Alan.
So the next appeal is appeal twenty-two eighty-six A, twenty-two eighty-six B, uh, this will be a concursio at two sixty-nine.
It's good.
Okay. Two sixty-nine Cumberland Edrow, area variance, uh, request to be allowed to construct a twenty-six by three thirty-two attached garage on the side yard, and this is gonna break down a side and a back, uh, it's a little confusing until you see the drawings. An eight by thirty front deck, neither which would meet the total sum of the fifty required side yards and setbacks in an R four district, or the fifty-foot front yard setback on the deck, on the front deck encroaching eleven foot into both side yards, leaving nineteen on the north side, nine on the south side. The B one, what you're gonna see, is encroaching fourteen foot on the north side, seven foot on the south side, leaving only six foot on the north side at twenty-three. And then on the south side, encroaching twenty-seven foot into the front yard, only leaving twenty-three. Now, that being said, uh, Alan can go over the details, and maybe the, uh, the layout will help.
Yeah.
With all those five variances?
Well, there's just, yeah, there's, there's two requests, but for multiple side yard.
Does it all begin with one applicant, or we have two, we just have the two?
We broke it down to front and back, so it's structure in the front, structure in the back.
Okay, so before we were talking about this property right over here.
Yeah.
Uh, who wanted to put the garage in? Now we're moving up just a, a few houses, talking about this property right here. So still, all zoned R four, these are all existing non-conforming lots. So we're talking about this parcel right here, so as of four, the houses are all close together, you know, not much room, that's why these side yards come into play. She's looking to put a garage right in this area right here, and then she's looking to put a, a front deck area right up front here. So here's what it looks like this morning. So, the front deck's going across here, back here where the, in the driveway is where the garage gonna go. So if you look at it, so here's the deck, and you can see the, how the offset is, you know, the main house here, then the garage here, so if you're looking at, you know, even, even putting the garage here, it doesn't meet the setback. Okay, which is why you gotta setback, a side yard setback for the garage, but then on the deck, you gotta side yard setback as well. Then you switch to the opposite sides, you got side yard setbacks again, and then you get the front yard setback as well for the front deck. What is the compliance is the rear yard, no problem now.
Touchdown, alright, me, me.
Alright. Lawyers.
Hey, you guys are doing good work tonight, thank you. So, um, I am going to advocate, uh, I am trying to reestablish, um, garage space that was on the property prior to the installation of the new septic system. My garage and barn were along the back southeast corner that were there, and I'm, I'm just trying to get that space back if I could. It's a narrow lot where we little postage stamps, um, I, uh, my ask is that you would consider it, I do have eight feet on the side, um, the side to my neighbor on the, on the south. Um, any piece of equipment that they brought in to do any of the work in my backyard didn't exceed eight foot, it was actually a seven-foot piece of equipment. And when I spoke to my contractor, he said, if we ever needed to get back there, we could bring a crane, we'd drop anything we needed to. Over, over.
If you wanna pay for it, they sure would.
Yes, you know, but my septic system is brand spanking new, it's a, it's a raised bed system, so I can't build anything on it back there to begin with. Um, so I would respectfully ask that you'd consider it. My neighbors would love it, cuz I get my stuff out of my driveway.
Well, you're actually not gonna be able to use the garage for parking a car.
Why not?
Why not?
Well, you'd be able to put one tire in, that's it.
Yeah.
And you have eight feet, right?
Eight feet on the south side, yes, sir.
And what is the side yards there?
Twenty minimum, fifty max. Go fifty.
And we're gonna have?
So you're gonna have, basically, if you look at the garage, you have eight feet there, but then if you look at the deck in the front, there's only six feet there. Those are the two tightest points.
Right. So let's look at the garage in the back, so you're gonna have basically a drive-through garage, and you'll just have storage in the part that's attached closest to the house.
Yes.
And it's twenty-six feet deep?
Yes.
So it's basically just one car would be in there. And it's eighteen feet nine inches from that back corner?
Yes.
To your side yard, so you're getting nineteen plus eight, twenty-seven feet where you're actually supposed to have fifty. Fifty.
The, the reason you got so many numbers is because the garage came in, we set it that way, then the deck came in, we put them together. So in reality, you're only looking at two, you're looking at the six, you're looking at the eight, cuz every, everything else is less than that, or is more than that, so. Now, she, if she'd come in for two different things, it's, both of them are expansions of a existing non-conforming. She, she would've needed variance for all of it, so, but if you approve it, then you're gonna prove that her garage can only go over that far. So if all of a sudden she needs to get two more feet more in the garage, she'll be coming back for a rehearing, because you're gonna prove those numbers as they are.
It's also a front yard, too.
There's a front yard variance as well, so it's a sixty percent variance for the sides, at least on the garage right now, and forty-six percent on the one side.
Well, we're just looking at the garage, right?
Yeah.
Uh, public hearing portion of the meeting is now open, anybody here like to speak to this matter? I'd see all kinds of jumping up down there. Does it go down to the county? No. Well, we close the public hearing portion of the meeting and ask board members for their comments and concerns.
For the garage portion.
I think it's pretty substantial, um, all the way around. And, uh, it certainly can be minimized, I guess, on the width coming off the house, looks like it's fifteen and a half feet off the side of the house outward, so that could be brought in a little bit, at least twelve feet or something. Or less. Well, she says there's twenty-three and a half feet from, in the front deck, there's twenty-three and a half feet from the property line to the side of the house, the side of the deck. So I'm assuming that's the same distance from the lot line to the side of the house in the back. And if she's asking for an eight-foot variance, it's leaving fifteen feet for the garage to protrude out from the house.
Yeah, portion of that's because you got your septic on the back side, correct?
Well, no, I'm saying it's just the width, the width of the garage.
Mr. Cherry, you're talking about right here?
Yes, fifteen and a half feet.
From this, from the point of the house, oops. So from the, from the point of the house out to the edge of this right here, so the garage is fifteen feet.
Right.
Based off subtracting eight from here, taking the eight, subtracting from that, measure it there.
I'm just saying, that can be shrunk down to, to help minimize that variance, it's a sixty percent request variance, just on the side of the twenty, twenty-foot minimum.
So, Mr. La Force, the, the lot does kind of angle out, and so I don't think I have a full twenty-three feet from the side of the house to my property line at that particular space, it does, the, the line does come out a little bit.
You're saying it's more or less at the garage?
Less at the garage.
So we don't know if the eight foot is, is exact?
Well, the eight foot is exact to where I wanna put it, but I think you're asking me what, from the eight foot to the side of the house, I don't think it's fifteen. You're suggesting that it's fifteen feet from the side of the house to the end of the garage, based on that, and I don't think that that's what I had about, that's not what I.
This plot plan looks like the lines are pretty parallel in the house and the sign, but I can only go based on the dimensions that are here, you can't speculate, it's gonna let, would or wouldn't be, but I'm just trying to figure out a way to minimize the variance of sixty percent request, so.
Your garage doors are just standard eight feet?
Well, I'll put, in the front, I'll put as, as wide of a door as I can, um, and then I'll put, I'll put a standard eight feet out the back. So that I can move any lumber or materials through the back, I have a, a small shed on that.
As, as I recall, the original one, you were going to turn it into the garage.
Yeah, I was, and, uh, we, we did that seventy-five ways to Sunday, and, and it's really tight. I could do it probably until I'm maybe a couple more years older, but I suspect that I might be losing a little bit of my peripheral, and it might be challenging as, as I try to age in place a little. Trying to make it simple.
Can you go back to the, uh, roadway view? We don't have anything that shows us the, uh, homes, we're up to the right of it, you have that aerial?
Yeah, it's very tight to the one on the left, you know, we do have more space on the right-hand side. So the little addition that's on the back of the house now, would that be removed?
Yes.
This right here, that's where the one car little garage used to be, right?
No, the garage actually was at the, at the end of that driveway space, Alan.
Yeah.
And it went, the garage, and then the barn went all the way from the edge of that garage, all the way to the back of the, uh, of the lot.
Okay. So is, is that a concrete pad sitting right here?
That's just the original, um, permit driveway.
So we're looking at very fairly substantial variance for the garage. I don't know what other benefit she could do to achieve.
Well, minimize the variance, we could have went down to a twelve-foot opening, and it gives, still give you a nine-foot door with two and a half feet on either, or a foot and a half on either side of the garage door for structural purposes. Then have to give it a eleven-foot width on the side.
And but the variance is about nineteen feet?
Well, the variance on the right side is, is, uh, twelve feet, if you add a twenty-foot minimum.
Then you tighten it up on the front variance, so if you say the twenty on that side, then if you go to the front variance, then it's supposed to be thirty. Then you tighten it up on the front variance, so if you say the twenty on that side, then if you go to the front variance, then it's supposed to be thirty, then it would bump that one up to like an eighty, seventy-eight percent variance? If you use the argument for the front quarter to the back?
Well, the front is only six feet out of thirty?
Yeah, if you did the twenty and thirty, the way that.
Oh, you're, you're looking at, yeah, well, I'm trying to just stick to the one.
Yeah. It's gonna come up, so if you say it now, at least they're thinking about it. You can't get the twenty out the front and the back, you can't, you can't ask for them both.
I'm saying there's an alternative to minimize the, the variance request for the garage. So three.
Minus those two forms, I'm not trying to create any more space that I originally had, I'm really trying, I, I really am just trying to get back space that I once had. If, if at all possible.
Yeah, but our decisions here are not just for you, it's for the property and the properties that have come before us later on, so that's it's a difficult position to be on this side of the chair, um, because we don't look at it from a personal standpoint, we have to look at it from a property standpoint, and that's what I'm trying to shoot for, make sure.
I don't see undesirable change in neighborhood character or to nearby properties. The, whether the request is substantial is the sticking point and whether the request will have adverse physical or environmental effects, I don't see those actually occurring either. It's, it's a little bit, I mean, we're somewhat guessing what the actual dimensions are.
We can only go based on the numbers we have in front of us, for me anyway, I'm only looking at what's here in front of me.
And I know how you're doing it, and I was like.
If it was, if it was a twelve-foot opening for that garage, it would knock it from a sixty percent, uh, variance for this side anyway, down to forty-five percent. And, and just trying to minimize it. But that's just my discussion. Her request, I guess, I don't know, it's not my request, it's her request.
Right, well, it would be that you, as far as the garage is concerned, would be to grant that variance or deny that variance?
Based on your four-pronged test, right, is there another means achievable or whatever?
Well, the, whether the request is substantial is, I guess, where I had the hangup.
Is there additional information that you're looking for to help make up your minds? I mean, you want her to go back and tell you exactly what size garage door is and what that length is, so that you can make a more informed decision? Does she actually want to table that part of the variance and go get that information, or does she want you to vote?
You're asking her and so.
Talking about the garage right now?
Yeah. I'm, uh, I'm not sure that I should be going.
Because if, if they, if they vote now, they vote no to diet, then you can't put a garage here at all, cause you don't have the room.
So can I, uh, can I get some clarity on the information that you're requesting from me, so that I can?
What the actual plan of that garage would be, if it's a ten-foot wide door, a foot wide door, eight-foot wide door?
Just for clarification, uh, can you read the, the balancing test, a whole, to help her, but Alan just said, uh, benefit can be achieved by other means necessary. So Elizabeth, when they ask you that, they're, they're saying, can you shrink it down? Would an eight-foot door instead of a ten-foot door actually work for you, why and why not? So if there's any way that you substantially reduce a variance, that's the questions. Or can it be, and Vassal's saying, well, you could shrink your door, it's instead of eight feet, it's twelve feet, if that makes sense. So it's less intrusion on your neighbor to the right, uh, for potential.
Yeah, I don't know that I'm comfortable to make.
It's not the nineteen, correct me if I'm wrong, Vassal, it's not the nineteen.
All I'm saying, right, but where the door coming off the driveway is, that can be reduced, instead of being what I believe to be fifteen and a half feet, whatever that is, to a twelve-foot uh, extension off the side of the house, and that would minimize the variance request. And that's what I'm looking for.
You'd lose three feet off this width of your garage.
I get you, yeah, and I.
You still get in there, cause the garage door is gonna be the same, whether you got fifteen and a half feet, or you got twelve feet, you're gonna put a nine-by-seven or eight-by-seven door? The vehicle still goes in one way or the other.
I was putting a bigger door on the front in my, but I, I think that, I think that if that's the information that you're looking for or asking if I can reduce the size of my garage and be able to achieve what I still want to achieve, I, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna have to then, I guess, table it unless anybody, um, I, I just I'm just struggling for some clarity understanding, you, you just wanna minimize the variance request, that, so.
Right now you're asking for a sixty percent variance on, with that garage side?
Sixty percent just based on the garage, or is it just based on the garage?
Yeah, we're talking about just the garage right now.
So if you go, if you go, Alan, can you pull up the overall one, just Betsy, so we, uh, see what it says, your eight foot on, on there?
Yep.
So if you go to twelve, then it goes what percentage? If it goes to twelve, then it goes down to a forty-five percent variance instead of a sixteen percent variance?
They, they need to know what this width is, what this garage door is.
Can you live with it, and if you can't, why can't you?
Gotcha.
Most cars fit in a nine-by-seven, you can fit them in there, uh, a bigger one is because you're with not answering, saying I want it because I want it. There's no justification on, can the variance be substantially reduced? And Vassal just asked you, can it be reduced out of this? So if you'd like to say on the garage, on the garage part, so then it would table, so then you'd be able to table, we'll go for the back one now to say if you would like to request to table that, to find out if it can, can't work with your framing wise, but if you do wanna come back with those things, you'd have to have that kind of info, the same question will be asked.
I think so.
And having the same thing, so if you would like to, that would be to request to Mr. Alan and the board members.
Mr. Hill, I respectfully request to table my request until I can become better prepared, can I get earlier, I'm gonna jump this one.
You would actually.
You guys have emotionally defeated me, so. I'm old business, coming back at you.
So now, we would table that, sorry. Where do you want them to do the table, the request first?
Right, so that'd be a twenty-two eighty-six A.
Twenty-two eighty-six A is tabled.
I make a motion that we table twenty-two six A.
I'll say it.
And show hands.
That's for additional information.
Additional information, yes.
Now we go to the one that's tighter.
Yes.
Henry Hill. We're, we're doing a roll call, right?
That is correct.
Vassal La Force.
Yes.
Mary Ann Alzine.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Patrick Dooley.
So now, we're in the front deck with six point one, twenty-three point six, and twenty-two point seven for a, I'm sorry, side yard, side yard, front yard, twenty-two point seven, so three variances requested for a front addition, front deck. She, she leased that side yard of this one. Then it was twenty, she got twenty-three.
So it's the left side of the front.
Yeah. Which is not conforming with the house to start with.
Right.
Okay.
No, it is, well, the front is fifty or thirty?
Front's supposed to be fifty, yeah.
That's breaking the first system, not the previous system, alright.
And my question would be, why don't you just put a patio in?
Yeah, I just want, it, you know, for.
You need, you don't need anything, you can just do it.
Right, but I'd like to have a deck that is just flat and straight, you know, with, that I can put railing on my family, my grandkids, there's some, you know, continue to think about the future of how I can walk through my life safely and, and it just, it's, it's a lovely space. The best part about my house is the front and view and that deck. A deck just seems like the right thing you can do, I guess.
Kind of like the one that's there?
Yeah, kinda like the one that's there. I'd love to enclose that space if I could and put some screened-in porch there, so that I could debugify myself a little bit. So.
Now you say that, that's another variance.
Yeah.
So if you ever screened in that, that's another variance, so you're asking the, the board for a variance onto a variance that you just admitted you'd need a variance if you wanted to do a screened-in porch, so. Careful.
Okay.
Cause it still won't meet the front yard setback.
But if I wanted to.